Good evening. We'll call to order this Monday, January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-six, City Commission Meeting. We get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Dolison.
Here.
Commissioner Burdson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Mercer.
Here.
And Mayor Yates.
Here. All right, we'll have invocation led by Dr. Steve Negley this evening from First Presbyterian Church of Winter Haven, and followed by the City Clerk with Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's bow before God in prayer. Wonderful God, we gather here this night thankful for all that you've given us: life, health, abundance, and the freedom of assembly. We thank you for the city in which we live, as has served as a haven to many. We ask you to bless this meeting of our City Commission, that you might grant the elected and appointed officials and the citizens present this night wisdom, empathy, civic minds, and servants' hearts as we seek what is best for Winter Haven. Bless our city to be a blessing to many. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation of God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Your proclamation. Y'all got it. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. We have four proclamations that we would like to present to you this evening, followed by our 2025 Excellence in Action Awards. I'm going to ask Deputy City Manager M.J. Carnavale to read our first four proclamations and invite those guests to the podium.
All right, our first proclamation this evening, Mayor and City Commissioners, is "The Black Market: A Melanin Cultural Festival", and Simone Wilson and Zanzia Zau.
Zania.
I had it, I just wasn't ready. Zania Zau, the founders are here with us this evening. So whereas "The Black Market: A Melanin Cultural Festival" celebrates the richness of black culture and creativity and entrepreneurship, and whereas "This festival highlights the contributions of black-owned businesses, artists, and innovators fostering unity and economic empowerment", and whereas "It serves as a space to honor heritage, inspire future generations, and strengthen community connection", now therefore, William B. Yates, Mayor of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, does hereby honor and recognize "The Black Market: A Melanin Cultural Festival" for its dedication to uplifting and celebrating black excellence. And witness whereof, he has here and to set his hand and calls the seal of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, to be affixed this twenty-sixth day of January, 2026. Signed, William B. Yates, Mayor. Attest Vanessa Castillo, City Clerk.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Managers. I want to thank you, take this time to thank you for accepting the proclamation in support of "The Black Market: A Melanin Cultural Festival". As we return for our third year, we are proud to celebrate black-owned businesses during Black History Month. Our mission is rooted in supporting black-owned businesses as they expand their reach uplifting youth entrepreneurs and investing in cultural arts. This year, we also are honoring some community leaders, and we are also giving back to two nonprofits with scholarships to further their work in the community.
At this time, we would like to extend our invitation to the City Commissioner, the City Manager, as well as the community, to please come out and join us at "The Black Market: A Melanin Cultural Festival" on February seventh, eleven to four, right here on MLK Park on Lake Silver. Guests can expect a vibrant atmosphere, entrepreneurs, live music, food, cultural arts, and activities for the kids, so bring the kids out, y'all. The festival is designed to be family-friendly and welcoming, creating a space where everyone can connect, learn, and celebrate together. We would love to have you there. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, our next proclamation this evening is a special one. The MLK Week Committee and the folks who select our honorees for Black History Month were especially moved by this group, the Triumphant Eight, the Triumphant Eight, and so they have moved to dedicate the entire month of black, entire Black History Month to them. So would the representatives of the Triumphant Eight please come forward and their families? Wonderful. So whereas Black History Month provides an opportunity to reflect upon and honor individuals and groups whose courage and actions have shaped a more just and equitable society, and whereas in nineteen sixty-three, eight black children from the Pewsville community of Winter Haven became the faces of a legal challenge that confronted segregation and inequality within Polk County public schools, and whereas led by their parents, community leaders, the National Association for the Advancement of Colored Peoples, and Pewsville Pastor Joel Atkins, these families pursued justice through the courts after their requests for equal educational access were denied by the Polk County School Board. And whereas the legal action initiated on behalf of these eight children became a class-action lawsuit on behalf of all black students in Polk County, later joined by the United States Department of Justice and represented by the NAACP Legal Defense Fund. And whereas in nineteen sixty-eight, a federal court ordered the desegregation of Polk County public schools, marking a pivotal moment in local history and expanding access to equal education opportunities. And whereas through their resilience and perseverance, these eight individuals helped change the course of public education and opened doors to academic, professional, and economic opportunities for future generations. Whereas the courage, sacrifice, and legacy of these individuals, now collectively known as the Triumphant Eight, profoundly inspired the Black History Month Selection Committee and warranted unique recognition in 2026. Now therefore, William B. Yates, Mayor of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, does hereby dedicate February, 2026, as Black History Month, honoring the Triumphant Eight in the City of Winter Haven, and call upon all residents to reflect upon their legacy and the enduring importance of equal access to public education. And witness whereof, he has here and to set his hand and calls the seal of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, to be affixed this twenty-sixth day of January, 2026. Signed, William B. Yates, Mayor. Attest Vanessa Castillo, City Clerk.
Hey, I guess I've been nominated as spokesman for the group. All I want to say is just thank the Commission for bestowing this honor upon these eight people. I mean, we're not all here today. A couple of us have gone on to be with the Lord, but I just wanted to say to the Commission that you guys have no idea, you would have no idea what we went through trying to desegregate the schools in Polk County. And I just would just ask that someone in the city would sit us down as a group and just talk to us, and so we can just actually let you know what went on and how all of this transpired and progressed for us to get to where we are today. I currently substitute teach for Winter Haven High School. In my spare time, I'm a retired banker, but I substitute teach for Winter Haven High School, and most of those kids don't even have an idea of what happened. So, I mean, I think it's something, it's a rich history that needs to be brought to the attention of not only the high schools in Polk County, but also to the City of Winter Haven. And I just thank you for bestowing this honor upon us as a group. Thank you.
All right, continuing the tradition we've done the last few years, we will be recognizing and dedicating specific weeks of Black History Month to individuals selected by the committee. So if Ms. Valparissa Baker is here, she should come up to accept. Whereas in 2021, the City of Winter Haven began recognizing local heroes during Black History Month who have made a lasting impact on the community. And whereas community leaders identified local heroes who demonstrated leadership, service, and commitment to the Winter Haven community. And whereas one hero will be recognized for each week of Black History Month 2026, and whereas Valparissa Jacob Baker is recognized as one of these local heroes. Whereas Ms. Baker dedicated more than thirty-three years of service to Polk State College, advancing through multiple leadership roles and retiring as Chief Diversity Officer and Title IX Coordinator, positively impacting countless students and employees. And whereas Ms. Baker has demonstrated a strong commitment to service, mentorship, and faith-based leadership, earning numerous local, regional, and national recognition for her contributions. And whereas through her leadership, mentorship, and example, Ms. Baker has opened doors for others and left a lasting legacy of service within the Winter Haven community and beyond. Now therefore, William B. Yates, Mayor of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, does hereby recognize the week of February first, 2026, as Valparissa Jacob Baker Week in the City of Winter Haven, in recognition of her dedication to education, leadership, mentorship, and community service. And witness whereof, he has here and to set his hand and calls the seal of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, to be affixed this twenty-sixth day of January, 2026. Signed, William B. Yates, Mayor. Attest Vanessa Castillo, City Clerk.
Thank you very much. Greets to each of you, Mayor Yates, Mayor Protem Mercer, Commissioners Burdson, Davis, Dolison, and City Managers, survivors, and your team. I humbly accept this recognition. My heart is full, it overflows. I think about my mom. My sister and I were raised in a single-family household by our mom and our grandmother. We were always taught, and they demonstrated to us, trusting in God, having faith, and treating people the way you want to be treated will always open many doors for you through the journey of life. Today's recognition brings me to the thought of Maya Angelou. Paraphrasing, simply saying, "People will forget what you said. People will forget what you did. But people will never forget how you make them feel, and today you fill my heart with much joy." Before I leave the podium, certainly I'd like to thank Mrs. Patricia Phil Smith for her recognition. I certainly thank my family who's here with me this evening, led by my husband Reverend Derek Baker, and all of us will certainly keep this memory etched in our hearts forever. Again, thank you so much. Bless each of you.
All right, our next dedication will be for Johnny Bernard Neal Jr. Week. See Mr. Neal making his way up. Whereas "The City of Winter Haven recognizes how diversity and inclusion are woven into the fabric of American life and solidify the foundation of strong communities", whereas in 2021, the City of Winter Haven began celebrating Black History Month by recognizing local heroes who have made a significant impact on the community. And whereas a group of community leaders came together and identified local heroes who blazed new trails while demonstrating passion, dedication, and compassion for the community. And whereas one hero will be recognized for each week of Black History Month 2026, and whereas Mr. Johnny Bernard Neal Jr. is recognized as one of these local heroes. Whereas Mr. Neal served as the band director for Jewett High School from nineteen fifty-three to nineteen sixty-eight and continued his career as a music educator and band director following the integration of Polk County Public Schools and what is now known as Jewett Academy. And whereas Mr. Neal dedicated more than thirty-five years to educating and mentoring students in Polk County Public Schools, retiring in nineteen eighty-eight after a distinguished career. Now therefore, William B. Yates, Mayor of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, does hereby recognize the week of February eighth, 2026, as Johnny Bernard Neal Jr. Week in the City of Winter Haven, in recognition of his lasting contributions to music education in the community. And witness whereof, he has here and to set his hand and calls the seal of the City of Winter Haven, Florida, to be affixed this twenty-sixth day of January, 2026. Signed, William B. Yates, Mayor. Attest Vanessa Castillo, City Clerk.
Good evening. I'm Johnny B. Neal III. So, but my dad was quite a man. He really, really took care of a lot of kids back in the day. He even drove one of his students to Tallahassee to get him enrolled in school at Florida A&amp;M. And he came to me about two years ago when I saw him. He said, "You know, if it wasn't for your dad, I don't know where I would be today." Now, a lot of us, I think, here remember my dad. If you went to Jewett or you went to Denison, my mother taught at Denison Spanish. And I know him. You look very familiar, but, you know, it's really good to be back here. And I really, really appreciate the City bestowing this honor on him, and also the nominating committee for recommending him to the City. And I really appreciate it, and thank you very much.
And the banners representing the local heroes will be raised in Central Park alongside the banners from years past and stand for all of Black History Month. And then there will be two more honorees at your next meeting for the remaining weeks of Black History Month.
So Mayor and Commissioners, at this point in our program, we are proud to present our 2025 Excellence in Action Annual Impact Awards. As you know, the City Commission adopted a strategic plan that focuses on six strategic pillars. And annually, for the past three years, we have recognized outstanding achievements in each one of those categories. Our first one this evening is for Quality of Life. And with us, we have Andy Palmer, Steve Pruitt, Julie Adams, Scott Eilers, Mike Schimmel, and Adam Butler. And this is in recognition of the Chain of Lakes Park outdoor amenities. This team is being recognized for delivering visible and lasting improvements to one of Winter Haven's most important community spaces, a project that directly supports how residents and guests live, recreate, and connect. Over the past two years, their work at Chain of Lakes Park has transformed aging and flood-prone facilities into modern, functional, and welcoming amenities. Major upgrades to the Rowdy Gaines Olympic Pool, including new tile, shade structures, and upgraded pumping systems, have extended the life of a regional asset while significantly improving the experience for users of all ages. At the same time, the former stadium and training fields have been replaced with four state-of-the-art collegiate-level artificial turf baseball fields, supported by expanded parking and well-designed amenities in concession areas. Just as important, the team restored and activated the lakefront, improving access and creating a striking trail soon to be enjoyed daily by the community. With the final elements, additional parking and a multipurpose field nearing completion, this work reflects a clear commitment to functionality, aesthetics, and a shared sense of community, bringing the Quality of Life pillar to life in a meaningful and tangible way. Congratulations. Our next Excellence in Action Award is for Community Safety. And with us this evening, we have Drew Newbrand, Michael Waters, Charlie Byrd, Tanya Ayers, and Andy Palmer. This team is being recognized for delivering a critical investment in public safety that strengthens emergency response and preparedness for a growing area of Winter Haven. Fire Station Number Four was strategically opened in the heart of northeast Winter Haven, positioned near residential neighborhoods, Polk State College, parks, and key utility facilities. Its location allows for faster response times in an area of the community that is both active and deeply valued, enhancing the city's ability to protect residents, visitors, and staff. Beyond fire services, Fire Station Number Four functions as a true public safety complex. It provides a new accessible home for the Safe Neighborhoods team, enabling them to better serve the entire city, and includes space for the Winter Haven Police Department, creating a nearby field office to support officers working in this area. Its proximity to Diamond Plex and the Polk State College soccer fields allows for rapid response during large tournaments and events. Now one of the city's most active fire stations, Fire Station Number Four is already delivering measurable impact, supported by strong project continuity that was provided by Andy Palmer and Charlie Byrd during a transition in fire administration. Congratulations to our community safety team. Our third Excellence in Action Award is for Responsible Government, and this is for our City University Program, represented by Katrina Hill, Heather Pellegrino, and Amanda Jo Nicholson. This team is being recognized for creating and sustaining a program that strengthens trust, transparency, and civic understanding between the city and the community it serves. Led by Katrina Hill and contributed significantly by department leadership across the entire organization, Winter Haven City University offers residents a meaningful behind-the-scenes look at how the city operates and how decisions are made day to day. Through an eight-session program that includes presentations, interactive activities, and immersive tours, participants gain a clear understanding of city services, financial stewardship, and the collaboration required to deliver exceptional customer service. Now having completed four years with preparations underway for year five, City University has graduated one hundred and three individuals who are actively engaged in civic life. Graduates now serve on advisory boards and committees, one is a member of the Planning Commission, and one, Commissioner Davis, joined the City Commission. The program's success also relies on the essential logistical support provided by Heather Pellegrino and Amanda Jo Nicholson, whose coordination efforts make the program possible. Together, this work reflects responsible government in action through transparency, collaboration, and long-term investment in an informed and engaged community. Our next strategic pillar, Recognition for Excellence in Action, is in the category of Environmental Stewardship, and this is for the Lake Conine Nature Park. And with us, we have Andy Palmer, Steve Pruitt, Carlos de Jesus, Julie Adams, Scott Eilers, Brittany Hart, and Devin Moore. This team is being recognized for their long-term commitment to protecting natural resources while thoughtfully expanding public access. Lake Conine Nature Park officially opened on May thirteenth, 2025, marking the culmination of more than fifteen years of planning, community engagement, collaboration, advocacy, creative funding, and sustained dedication. The city purchased this approximately thirty-two-acre site in 2010 with a clear purpose: to restore wetlands that help treat stormwater runoff into Lake Conine while preserving the land as a natural asset for current and future residents. The first phase of the project focused on environmental protection through the creation of a series of wetland cells designed to filter stormwater before it reaches the lake. This work was made possible through partnerships with Polk County, the State of Florida, and the Southwest Florida Water Management District. The second phase, approved by the City Commission in 2024, added recreational amenities with a $3.7 million investment. Today, the park features a mile-long trail loop with interior paths, a shaded picnic pavilion, playground, and a fishing dock, all carefully integrated into the natural setting. Lake Conine Nature Park stands as a clear example of environmental stewardship in action, demonstrating how intentional planning, partnerships, and patience can meet today's needs without compromising those of future citizens. Thank you. Our next Excellence in Action Impact Award is in the category of Infrastructure. And tonight, we recognize the Lake Elbert Trail, represented by Andy Palmer, Steve Pruitt, Carlos de Jesus, Julie Adams, Scott Eilers, Gary Hubbard, Mike Campbell, Jordan Sperry, Mos Ram, and Josh Crosby. This team is being recognized for delivering a once-in-a-generation infrastructure project that combines mobility, safety, utility reliability, and long-term planning into a single, connected investment. The Lake Elbert Trail fulfills a community vision that spans decades, providing a safe and continuous pathway that connects neighborhoods, schools, Polk State College, parks, and the broader city. What the public sees today is a thoughtfully-designed multimodal corridor that enhances access to the lake, improves traffic safety, and creates new opportunities for walking, running, and biking. Equally important is the extensive work completed below ground. As part of the deliberate "dig-ones" approach, access to the lake, improves traffic safety, and creates new opportunities for walking, running, and biking. Equally important is the extensive work completed below ground. As part of the deliberate "dig once" approach, the project replaced aging water and sewer mains, upgraded stormwater systems, added fire hydrants, and installed fiber conduit, addressing infrastructure that had been failing and causing service disruptions for years. This work required careful coordination to keep existing systems operating while new systems were brought online. The result is a corridor that not only looks complete but functions reliably and efficiently for decades to come. The Lake Albert Trail exemplifies the infrastructure pillar in action by investing wisely, coordinating across departments, and delivering infrastructure that supports daily life while preparing Winter Haven for the future. Our next pillar to be recognized for Excellence in Action is in the category of Economic Sustainability. And we may have a one-man show for this one this evening, it looks like. This is for the Intermodal Logistics Park Investments and the Economic Development Council. With us this evening, we have Eric Labby, our Director of Economic Opportunity and Community Investment. Unfortunately, members of the EDC that we had hoped to join us were committed to other obligations and couldn't be here, but want to mention Bruce Lyon, Dr. Angela Falconetti, and Steve Elias. This group is being recognized for advancing a long-term economic strategy that positions Winter Haven for durable, high-quality growth. Through sustained leadership, advocacy, and partnership, the Economic Opportunity and Community Investment Team and the Economic Development Council have helped establish the Central Florida Integrated Logistics Park as a competitive statewide asset. A defining milestone in that effort in 2025 was securing a $1.5 million grant from the Florida Department of Commerce to expand direct rail access into the park, a critical infrastructure investment more than a decade in the making. That rail investment is already delivering tangible results. It directly supported the $150 million Chick-fil-A supply investment into a cold storage and distribution facility, which will create more than 180 full-time jobs and leverage direct CSX connectivity to move goods more efficiently while reducing truck traffic on local roadways. More broadly, the fully entitled 1,500-acre logistics park is capable of supporting more than 12 million square feet of development with strong utility infrastructure designed to accommodate food and cold storage, manufacturing, and statewide logistics operations. With active development underway and additional projects positioned to move forward, this work reflects economic sustainability in action by aligning smart public investment with private confidence, strengthening the job market, diversifying the local economy, and ensuring Winter Haven is prepared for enduring success. And I have one more this evening, Mayors, if you'll indulge me. This is what we define as a Legacy Leadership Award. We've only given this out a few times over the past few years. And this is recognizing our Project Manager of the Year, Mr. Andy Palmer. This includes a number of projects which you've already heard of this evening and some that you haven't heard about this evening, but Lake Albert Trail, Chain of Lakes Park Phase Two, the Winter Haven Recreation and Cultural Center, Rowdy Gains Pool, Willowbrook Golf Course renovation, Fire Station Number Four, and Lake Conine Park. Andy Palmer is being recognized for exceptional leadership that reaches far beyond any single project or department. This year alone, his name appears across four of the city's six strategic pillar awards, a reflection of the scope, consistency, and impact of his work. Andy has shouldered complex responsibility with steadiness and integrity, guiding projects from vision to execution while working collaboratively with citizens, contractors, vendors, city staff, and the City Commission. His approach is disciplined, transparent, and rooted in doing what is right for the community over the long term. The project under Andy's leadership represents some of the most significant investments in Winter Haven's history, including Lake Albert Trail, Chain of Lakes Park, the Winter Haven Recreation Cultural Center, Rowdy Gains Pool, Willowbrook Golf Course, Fire Station Number Four, and the Lake Conine Nature Park. Collectively, these efforts total tens of millions of dollars, and more importantly, create lasting public assets that serve residents today and for generations to come. This award recognizes not just the volume of work delivered, but the lasting legacy of thoughtful leadership, cross-departmental collaboration, and unwavering dedication that Andy Palmer brings to the city of Winter Haven every day. Congratulations. He may have had some input on a project over in Auburndale during all this, too.
Thank you for those presentations. With that, we've got two sets of minutes to review.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Move approval of both sets of minutes?
Has been made for approval of both sets of minutes. Is there any further discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. With that, we'll move on to comments from the audience. We don't have anyone that has signed up. However, if you would like to speak, now is your time. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to our ordinance's second reading. Ordinance O-2601, requested by Lake Ashton. City Attorney, will you read by title only?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O-2601, an ordinance amending Chapter 21 of the Code of Ordances of the City of Winter Haven, Florida by amending a portion of Plan Unit Development Ordinance O-0778, providing for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date. The general location, the subject property is located in Lake Ashton Roman numeral II, generally located east of County Road 653 and west of Rattlesnake Lake, and consists of the common area parcels containing the amenity center and rights of way for the Lake Ashton II CDD. The area covered by this request is 54.18 plus or minus acres. Thank you.
City Manager?
Mayor, Commissioners, there's been no changes since first reading. Just to refresh your memory, this is a change to the PUD that is intended to allow for mobile food vending as a permitted use on the subject property. Staff recommends that the City Commission approve Ordinance O-2601 on second and final reading.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Move approval of O-2601 on second reading.
Thank you. Motion's been made, so we'll close the commission meeting, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, reopen the City Commission meeting. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Ordinance O-2602. City Attorney, will you read by title only?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O-2602, an ordinance amending Ordinance 2324, the 2035 Winter Haven Comprehensive Plan, by amending the Schedule of Capitol Improvements portion of the Capitol Improvements element of the City of Winter Haven Comprehensive Plan, revising Capitol Improvements element policies 1.1.7 and 1.1.8, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, providing for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, and providing an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor, Commissioners, there's been no changes since your first reading on this. As a reminder, Florida statutes does require all local governments to adopt a five-year schedule of Capitol improvements as part of this comprehensive plan. This update includes fiscal years 2526 through 2930 and is derived from the city's 2526 operating budget, which was adopted by the Commission September 22 of 2025. Staff recommends the City Commission approve Ordinance O-2602 and authorize the City Manager or Designee to take all necessary actions related to the ordinance, and this is second and final hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve O-2602 on second reading.
Thank you. Motion's been made, so we'll close the commission meeting, open the public hearing. Any members of the public wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, reopen the City Commission meeting. Any further discussion on this item? I just have one question, not to call you out, Commissioner Davis. Are you okay to vote on this item with it being the Polk County School Board's item?
I think I am. I'm not involved in that, so. Yeah, and I don't see anything that would be specific to the types of conflicts that would be identified in Section 112.313, so at this point.
Just want to be sure.
Thank you. Might be different if there was an actual agreement or something, and we'd have to look at that on case-by-case basis.
Okay. All right. They're safe and sorry.
Yes.
Okay. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right, ordinance O-2603. Sorry, City Attorney by title only?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O-2603, an ordinance amending the Winter Haven Code of Ordances, Chapter 21, Article Roman numeral VII, Division 5, relating to approval of subdivision plats, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor, Commissioners, again, there have been no changes since first reading. This action is tied to Senate Bill 784, which was passed by the legislature during the 2025 legislative session and became law July 1 of 2025. That bill amended Florida statutes by addressing the process of governing, the review and approval of final subdivision plats by local governments. You'll recall that shortly after that bill became law, we brought to you a new process and procedure that allows that to be done, or requires that that be done administratively. This is simply the action to officially codify those actions consistent with what was done previously and in accordance with state law. Staff is recommending City Commission approve Ordinance O-2603 on second and final reading and authorize City Manager or Designee to take all necessary actions related to the adoption of Ordinance O-2603. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve O-2603 on second reading.
Thank you. With that, we'll close the commission meeting, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to this item? Now's your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any further discussion on this item from the commission? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Ordinance O-2604. City Attorney, will you read by title only, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O-2604, an ordinance amending the Winter Haven Code of Ordances, Chapter 21, Article Roman numeral II, Table 21-32A, Table of Land Uses, Chapter 21, Article Roman numeral II, Division 3, General Regulations for All Zoning Districts, and Chapter 21, Article Roman numeral IX, Section 21-532, Definitions relating to Certified Recovery Residences, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, codification, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney? City Manager, sorry?
Mayor, Commissioners, no changes since first reading. This item pertains to Senate Bill 954, which was passed by the legislature during the 2025 legislative session, signed by the governor, and became effective on July 1 of 2025. That bill revises Florida statutes by requiring local governments to amend their land development regulations to provide reasonable accommodation of certified recovery residents by January 1 of 2026. Certified recovery residents are a type of residential facility which provide individuals with addiction treatment a place for re-entering society after completion of an addiction treatment program. So again, this is putting the city in compliance with Florida statutes and state law. Staff recommends the City Commission approve Ordinance O-2604 on second and final reading and authorize City Manager or Designee to take all necessary actions related to Ordinance O-2604. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve O-2604 on second reading.
Motion's been made, we'll close the commission meeting, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to this item? Now's your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, reopen the City Commission meeting. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda. We didn't have an agenda review, so do we want to just do it? Why don't we tackle these, just so we have those on record of what's in the consent agenda?
I can give you a... You want to vote on them individually or in its entirety with just an update on each one?
Well, I vote on it in its entirety, but we haven't, as a body, had an opportunity to really look at them and see what's going on.
Happy to do so, sir. Thank you. So the first item of the consent agenda is Item 10A. This is the recommendation of award of RFQ 2613. On November 19, 2025, the city issued RFQ 2613 for the Construction Engineering and Inspection Services for the East Winter Haven Aquifer Recharge at Bradco. This is also known as the Managed Aquifer Recharge Well. The city received one submission by the December 19 deadline for that RFQ. During a public meeting held January 5 of 2026, the Professional Services Committee evaluated that proposal. Given the single response, the committee established a minimum average ranking score of 70 prior to the review. Jones, Edmonds, and Associates, Inc. of Winter Haven, Florida, received an average score of 86.2, with all committee members scoring at least a 70. Committee's award recommendation was posted, with no protests received in response. There are no financial impacts associated with the negotiation of a contract, which is what's being recommended here. If an acceptable agreement is negotiated, we will bring that back for future City Commission action at a later date. Staff's recommending the Commission authorize the City Manager or Designee to negotiate a contract for the Construction Engineering and Inspection Services for the East Winter Haven Aquifer Recharge at Bradco, Managed Aquifer Recharge Well, RFQ 2613, with Jones, Edmonds, and Associates, and to take all actions necessary thereto. The second item is, bear with me, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, State Revolving Fund Amendment Number Four. Back in 2021, the city executed a state revolving fund loan agreement with DEP in the amount of $11,500,000 for the construction of a new 24-inch force main and 24-inch reclaimed water transmission main that linked the Chain of Lakes master lift station to wastewater treatment plant three. Additionally, that project included the installation of a new 24-inch reclaimed transmission main that now interconnects wastewater treatment plants two and three. In October of 21, the city and FDEP executed the First Amendment that added $10,954,050 to the agreement for the construction of the Harmony Master Lift Station. Due to supply chain delays, Amendment Two and Amendment Three extended the loan completion dates to February 2025 and November 15, 2025, respectively. This Amendment Number Four establishes the amortization schedule for the final loan amount of $20,874,567, which includes $409,305 in fees. This reduces the original award amount of $22,454,050. Additionally, Amendment Four established the biannual payment schedule of May 15 and November 15. Thus, the first payment is scheduled for May 15, 2026, in the amount of $521,864.18. Funds will be budgeted annually in the total amount of $1,43,728. of $1,043,728.36 to be made in two payments per fiscal year occurring in May and November. Staff's recommending the city commission approve Amendment Number 4 to the FDEP SRF WW531302 loan agreement and authorize city manager or designate to take any and all actions necessary thereto.
Was that a? Do we know if that was a 20-year term or a 30-year term?
Gary, can you? Do you recall what the term is on that?
20 years.
And then the next item is a authorization for travel. As you know, those come before the city commission for approval when it pertains to a commission member or the city manager. This is for Commissioner Birdsong's attendance to the Florida Regional Council's Association Policy Board Meeting, attending on behalf of the Central Florida Regional Planning Council. The dates of that travel will be January 29 and 30, and that will be held in Tallahassee. And the last item under the consent agenda is the request to award RFP 2605 and enter aviation fuel supply agreements for Winter Haven Regional Airport. On January 8 of 2021, the city entered into an aviation fuel supply agreement with World Fuel Service, Inc. to provide aviation fuels. The agreement is set to expire January 31 of 2026. Hence, on November 12, 2025, the city advertised RFP 2605, seeking qualified primary and secondary suppliers of aviation fuel. City received three proposals. A professional services committee convened on January 6 of 2026 and ranked those proposals with Ascent Aviation Group ranking 1, Associate Energy Group ranking 2, and AB Fuel Corporation ranking 3. Under the proposed agreements, Ascent Aviation Group will serve as the primary fuel supplier, and Associate Energy Group LLC will serve as the secondary fuel supplier. Each agreement will include a one-year initial term with four automatic one-year renewal periods. Ascent Aviation Group will provide $50,000 in business development funds for Winter Haven Regional Airport. These grant funds payable at the start of year 1 may be used for airport needs such as software upgrades, facility improvements, infrastructure, ground service equipment, marketing, and sales growth. Staff is recommending the commission approve RFP 2605 to Ascent Aviation Group, Inc. is the primary, and Associate Energy Group LLC is the secondary, respectively, and authorize the city manager or designate to negotiate agreements with each and take all necessary actions related thereto. And those are the four items of your consent agenda.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or hear motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Move approval of the consent agenda in its entirety.
Thank you. Motion's been made. We'll close the commission meeting, open public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to these items from the public? Now's your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. We've got a couple resolutions, R-2602 being the first one. City attorney by title only.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution R-26-02, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Winter Haven, Florida, renaming the approximate 400-foot east-west running portion of Avenue Y Northeast located within the Winter Haven city limits and north/west of Ware Avenue Northeast as Ware Avenue Northeast, making findings, providing for severability, providing for the repeal of conflicting resolutions, and providing an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Mayor, commissioners, I'm going to ask Eric Labby, our Director of Economic Opportunity and Community Investment, to present this item for your consideration.
Yes, sir. Mayor, commissioners, the Swan Lake Estates Unit Number 4 subdivision plat was approved by the city commission, recorded in public records of Polk County in February of 1983. As part of this plat, a single roadway depicted on your screen connecting to the existing Ware Avenue Northeast and extending west to the city limits was dedicated to the city. On the plat, it was identified as Ware Avenue Northeast. At some point in time, the roadway was renamed as Avenue Y Northeast, as reflected in E-911 addressing records. A search of city records could not find where the city commission took formal action to rename this roadway. Upon conversations with property owners abutting this portion of Avenue Y Northeast, it was found that there is a desire to restore the roadway's name to the originally platted name of Ware Avenue Northeast. It is a 400-foot portion of Avenue Y from the northwestern, northeastern curve traveling west to the city limit lines. Once Resolution R-2602 is approved by the city commission, the Polk County E-911, 911 addressing office will notify affected emergency response agencies and other governmental agencies. There will be a small financial impact to cover the cost of adding proper street name signage to this portion of the roadway. Staff does recommend the city commission approve Resolution R-2602 and authorize the city manager or his designate to take all necessary action related thereto.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Move approval of Resolution R-2602.
All right. Motion's been made. We'll close the commission meeting, open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, all. Reopen the city commission meeting. Sorry, it's my first time.
You're doing great, sir.
Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Resolution R-26-03. City attorney, we read by title only, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution R-26-03, a resolution approving a local agency program agreement between the city of Winter Haven, Florida and the state of Florida Department of Transportation for the construction of roadway sidewalk and landscape improvements associated with the complete street project on Roosevelt Drive from State Road 540/Cypress Gardens Boulevard to Register Road, and any supplemental agreements and/or amendments thereof, and authorizing the city manager execute on behalf of the city of Winter Haven said local agency program agreement approved herein, and any further necessary supplemental agreements and/or amendments thereto, repealing all resolutions in conflict with, providing for administrative correction of scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
Mayor, commissioners, I'm going to ask that Mrs. Brittany Hart, our Director of Public Works, present this item for your consideration this evening. Brittany?
Good evening, mayor, commissioners. The FDOT awarded a grant to the city for the purpose of funding the complete street enhancements for Roosevelt Drive southeast between Cypress Gardens Boulevard and Register Road. Previously, in July of 2025, we came before you with Resolution 25-40, which was to authorize the approval of a LAP agreement for a maximum reimbursement of $926,935 for the construction of those improvements. FDOT has recently identified an error within their work program that did not accurately reflect the full funding that was available for the construction of this project, and they have sent a revised LAP agreement to us. The revised LAP agreement would allow for a maximum reimbursement of $1,211,102 for construction of this project. If the city commission were to approve this resolution this evening and authorize the execution of the agreement, the project would be ready for advertised for bid. At this point in time, the city has expensed $145,656 in local funds for the design of the project, and we anticipate that the new funding set aside by the DOT would cover the construction improvements. If there was any difference in the construction bid cost and the reimbursement, the city would be responsible for funding those differences. So staff is requesting that the city commission approve Resolution R-2603, approving the LAP agreement that is presented, and authorize the city manager or his designate to execute the LAP agreement between the city and FDOT and take any other additional actions necessary.
So, mayor, commissioners, this is one of those really awesome things that we get to bring for you every now and then that the state has come back and said, we have some more money for you, so it increases that by $250,000, give or take, for that project.
Not enough to put a red light in there, though.
Yet.
Not enough to put a red light in there, but we have had conversations with the DOT about once this is constructed, and there's the punch-through to Register Road and traffic's flowing there, a discussion about a traffic study to determine if that intersection at Cypress Gardens Boulevard and Roosevelt needs to change and what that might look like in the future.
It could potentially go to a right turn only.
We've brought that up before them as a concern of our commission and asked that we do an evaluation upon completion of the.
Because if somebody wants to turn left, all they gotta do is go down to Register and go up to the next road, so. Okay. With that, commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve Resolution R-2603.
Okay. Motion's been made. We'll close the commission meeting, open public hearing. Anyone wish to speak to this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, reopen the city commission meeting. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. All right. Ordinance first readings. We will not vote on these items this evening. These items were voted on on February 9, but we will go ahead and have a first reading. So, O-2605, city attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O-26-05, an ordinance amending Chapter 21 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Winter Haven, Florida, by rezoning a portion of the parcel from Plan Unit Development, PUD zoning district, to Commercial Highway C-3 and Conservation CN zoning districts, providing for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, repealing all ordinances in conflict with, and providing an effective date. General location, the southern portion of the parcel, generally located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Cypress Gardens Boulevard and US Highway 27. The area covered by this request is 26.64 plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Mayor, commissioners, again, I'll ask Mr. Eric Labby to present this item on behalf of our team and also note that Mr. Tim Campbell, who is the petitioner, is available should there be further questions.
Yes, sir. Mayor, commissioners, the petitioner, Tim Campbell, requests the city rezon a portion of a parcel from Plan Unit Development zoning district to Commercial Highway C-3 and Conservation zoning districts. The undeveloped property contains 26.64 acres and consists of uplands and the Peace Creek. Current PUD ordinance O-2223, which is currently on the property, permits up to 313 multifamily residential units on the property. The northern portion of the parcel was subject to a PUD amendment late, well, middle last year, in July of 2025, and is subject to PUD ordinance O-2519, which generally follows the C-3 zoning district. The petitioner has indicated that an automotive dealership and accessory service department intends to relocate to the property. Surrounded uses are denoted in your fact sheet. The dealership is expected to generate significantly less demand on water, wastewater, and transportation than the currently permitted multifamily residential use. In addition, it will eliminate any impacts on Polk County public schools. The requested C-3 and CN zoning districts are consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is exempt from a business impact statement, and staff would, does recommend the city commission approve ordinance O-2605. Again, this is a first reading.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions on this item this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance O-26-06. City attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O-26-06, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Winter Haven, Florida, approving the contraction of the boundaries of the Vilamar Community Development District pursuant to Chapter 190 Florida statutes, describing the amended external boundaries of the district, describing the functions and powers of the district, providing notice of requirements, providing a severability clause and for the administrative correction of scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. General location, the area covered by this request is generally located north of Cunningham Road and west of Lake Cunningham, AKA Crystal Lake, and south of Grassy Lake. The area that is removed from the boundaries of the existing Vilamar Community Development District by this request is 51.62 plus or minus acres. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager?
Mr. Labby will present this item on behalf of the team. Thank you.
Again, mayor, commissioners, the Vilamar Community Development District has filed this petition with the city to contract the boundaries of the CDD as permitted by Chapter 190 of Florida statutes. There are seven phases currently of the Vilamar subdivision, totaling 2,002 lots within the subdivision that were platted between 2020 and 2025. This area may look familiar to you. We recently approved a rezoning of this area from the residential PUD zoning district to a commercial zoning district. This contraction of the CDD is to remove the commercial portion from the residential CDD. The petitioner has submitted a statement of estimated regulatory costs for the Vilamar CDD boundary amendment. The statement indicates the proposed boundary amendment will have no adverse impacts on the entities identified in Chapter 120.541 of Florida statutes, nor will there be any adverse financial impact to the state or the city. This does require a public notification consistent with Chapter 190 of Florida statutes, which requires four consecutive weeks of advertising prior to the second reading and public hearing of this ordinance that is on schedule to be heard at your next city commission meeting. Staff would recommend that the city commission approve ordinance O-2606, authorizing city managers designate to take all actions related thereto.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance O-26-08. City attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance number O-26-08, an ordinance of the city of Winter Haven, Florida, An ordinance of the city of Winter Haven, Florida, amending ordinance number O dash twenty-five dash twenty-nine regarding appropriation of funds for defraying expenses of the municipal government of the city of Winter Haven for the fiscal year commencing October one, two thousand and twenty-six, providing for severability, I'm sorry, that should be October one, two thousand and twenty-five, providing for severability and for the administrative correction of scrubbers' errors and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
City manager.
Mayor Commissioners, on October twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-five, the city's finance department moved into newly remodeled space on the second floor of the Florida Citrus Building, thus vacating their previous location within the city hall annex building. The vacated space is scheduled to be reoccupied by the city's engineering division. The renovation of Old Fire Station number one will include the interior hallway connection between this future building, the future building division location and the future engineering division location in order to facilitate convenient collaboration and customer service between those units. Upon vacation of that city hall annexed space by the finance division, it was determined that minor improvements to the space would be prudent at this time. Improvements will include new carpet throughout the space and interior painting. Staff has received a proposal from EnviroBuild, a contractor, on continuing contract with the city to complete the work in the amount of fifty-one thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars. As the engineering division is an internal service fund, staff proposes an amendment to utilize available funds from the general fund totaling fifty-one percent of the cost and from the utility fund covering forty-nine percent of that cost. Based upon that, twenty-six thousand, seventy-seven dollars will be funded from the general fund and twenty-five thousand, fifty-five dollars will be funded by the general fund or the utility fund. Corresponding revenue budget amendments will be made using proceeds from the general fund's sale of assets and interest earned on the utility fund's bond investments respectively. Staff is recommending the city commission advance ordinance O twenty-six oh eight to second reading and authorize city manager at that time or his designate to sign all documents and take all necessary actions related thereto. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll relook at these on February ninth. We've got one new business item, RFQ dash twenty-four dash thirty-eight. City attorney, will we need a vote on this item?
Yes, you will after the city manager presents.
All right, will you give us title only, please?
Yes, sir, there really isn't a title on this one, so we'll, I'll just, if you'll, with your permission, city manager.
Mayor Commissioners, on January twenty-seventh of twenty twenty-five, the city commission awarded RFQ twenty-four thirty-eight, which is the design build for renovation of Old Fire Station number one, to Everett Whitehead and Son Incorporated. The purpose of the redevelopment project is to construct new City of Winter Haven Building Division administrative offices that will better serve the citizens, given the city's recent and projected growth. On May twelfth, twenty twenty-five, the city commission approved the design phase proposal and the design build contract with Whitehead, establishing a GMP for design phase services of three hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. The design phase has now been completed. Whitehead has worked with the city's staff for value engineering and has prepared a proposal for all construction-related services, including a GMP for the construction phase in the amount of four million, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. It's anticipated that construction would commence within sixty days of execution of this amendment and is expected to take approximately eight to nine months to complete. The total project cost for the design and construction combined is four million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. The city has approximately seven million dollars set aside in the construction fund for the construction of Building Division facilities. Staff is recommending the city commission approve the guaranteed maximum price amendment to the design build contract with Whitehead for the renovation of Old Fire Station number one and authorize the city manager to sign all documents and take necessary actions related thereto. And what you have on the screen is the, one of the exterior elevations of that building. That building is basically just a shell that will be completely redeveloped, very effective design, efficient design for functionality of our Building Division, the creation of some training space within there as well to certainly help with the cramped spaces that those folks are in today.
All right, commissioners.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Move approval of RFQ twenty-four thirty-eight.
Thank you. We'll close the commission meeting, open public hearing. Any discussion or questions on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, reopen the commission meeting. Any further discussion on this item from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, just wanted to clarify for the record, your motion, Commissioner Burtzong, was to approve the amendment for the construction GMP. Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Liaison reports. We start with Commissioner Dolison tonight.
Well, I had the privilege of attending all things MLK and I think I was able to make it just about to every event and really enjoyed the celebration. Parade was exceptional as well. City did an outstanding job, by the way, and the committee, I want to commend the committee for just doing a great job with the celebration. Also able to, of course, attend the Polk County Day in Tallahassee and really enjoyed. We were blessed with exceptional weather for Tallahassee during this time of year. So that was really a blessing to appreciate that, but also to speak to our representatives and to those early in the process. And so we're hopeful that we'll see where things will progress too. The, also appreciate the city tire collection as well. That was, I almost hit the limit. Twenty-four tires. Looked around, I had, I really, they were very efficient and it was just a nice process. I know a lot of people were certainly appreciative of that. Was able to attend the Alpe annual luncheon and really well attended. It's great to hear the great work that they continue to do with agriculture and labor. One hundred black women was able to share in their annual event as well and also they do outstanding work in the community and just happy to see many of those organizations, you know, doing what they do. I, not long ago, I, you know, I said, I made at least a statement, said, you know, it was sad that Charlie Kirk was assassinated and sad in America to see that. Equally, it's sad to see what's happening in Minnesota as well and pray for those communities who are just simply going through a very difficult and challenging time. I think what's really poignant about that is the fact that, along with George Floyd, in that same city, suffered his fate and two lives have perished in that, in that community. And I, I think, you know, as, I'm proud to be an American and I just think we can do better and I just pray that we will do better as a nation, as a people. And that is at least my hope. Also, during our swearing in, I didn't get quite the celebration when I talked about the Indiana Hoosiers. But they did pull it through and exceptional game and I was really proud just to see that. But also, I tell people that I am Floridian by choice, but I'm Hoosier by birth. And it won't be long, I'll be in Florida as long as I was in Indiana. So, but it was just a great, great time just to celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Yes. It's been a busy first two weeks and I too attended most of the same events as you all, starting, I did the Leadership Polk Luncheon, I got to meet that cohort, which I was actually a part of originally, but had to step out of when I started my campaign for the seat. It's good to see all of them. I was at the Martin Luther King wreath laying ceremony and the community breakfast on Monday. I do regret missing my first parade. I had some health issues I had to deal with over that weekend. I'm looking forward to hopefully doing that next year. And then Polk County Day, that was wonderful. I want to thank our, our partners with, with the Southern Group for showing us around and their hospitality and for our, our delegation for meeting with us. I felt it was very productive, enjoyed going up there with you all. I also went, stopped by the Kiwanis Club Pancake Breakfast in the morning on my way to the Alpe Luncheon. So very busy. Overall, I think I clocked in about twenty hours worth of, of work extra besides the meeting and not including travel time. And then also, I just really have enjoyed getting to know everybody here. It's been a great time together and I'm really enjoying so far being a part of this body.
Commissioner Burtzong.
All right. I attended all of the MLK activities and I also went and gave a key to the city to a young lady that turned one hundred and eleven years old. Now, I didn't see the birth certificate, but that's, that's what they said. And I was simply blown away by the, by this lady. I mean, we had a conversation. She told me where she was born.
Sharp and.
I mean, she was talking to me just like I'm talking to you all and I was really amazed at that and so there's hope. Also attended the EDC meeting, the Winter Haven EDC meeting that we, that we have once a month. I attended the hundred year celebration of the city of Haynes City. And I sort of learned something. I did not know that Haynes, Haynes City, official name is just not Haynes City, it's the city of Haynes City. I did not know that until, until that night. Well, I, I just thought he, well, I know him and so I was just thinking that that's the way people refer to it, but to see it officially, I was blown away. But in a way, they had a, a nice celebration and I thoroughly enjoyed it. And I was actually a celebrity chef at the hundred black women's event and I did some southern collard greens. So thoroughly, thoroughly enjoyed that. And finally, the Polk County Day, it was, it was good what we did and the things that we did. But I tell you, at the reception, where our representative spoke and Senator Albritton, the, I don't want to call it a speech, but the remarks that he gave were so touching. And I mean, it was just, it was, it was really good. So he showed a very humanistic side of an elected official in the position that he's in and actually quoted a Bible verse, Second Corinthians, right Rev? Thirteen thirteen. And I mean, it was really sort of touching for him to speak like that in front of other elected officials and some of his, our delegation that was there. So as Reverend Dolison said, Commissioner Dolison said, we had great weather and man, I'm sure hoping it's a whole over for this week, but based on what's going on outside right now, I don't think that's going to be the case for me this later on in this week. So, but that's it.
Thank you. Mayor Burton Mercer.
Yes, I am like everyone else, I attended almost all of the MLK celebrations and the parade. Also attended Leadership Polk Luncheon, did, oh, Polk County Days in Tallahassee with everyone, did the agriculture and labor. I went to the pancake breakfast. I used to be a Kiwanian and I met our mayor there and he was a celebrity guest.
Holy boy.
So, yeah, that was a, I think we've all had a, a big week or last two weeks and so I'm really glad that it certainly kept us busy and it kept, kept us motivated to keep going, so.
Thank you. So not to repeat everything that was said, but I'll, I'll just say this on the, on the MLK events of the week, you know, it was, to me, to me, that week is about unifying. It's about coming together as a community regardless of what our backgrounds are, regardless of what race we are. And in past years, there's been some events that, that in my opinion, didn't quite celebrate that. It was more de-unifying than anything else. And I think this week, it was truly a unifying week. Parade, the lunches, the dinners, the breakfast, it just was, there was a positive message at every single one of them. It was remembering the legacy of Dr. King and the day that we're living in right now, that's what's needed. Division is not needed. It's, it's unifying and, and proud to call Winter Haven my home and we are a community that is unifying based upon what I saw last week. So that was, that was a great week. Talk a little bit about our visit to Tallahassee. So what did we talk about? Everybody's kind of talked about our, our trip up there and I, I wanted to give you a scoop on what we, what did we do up there for a day? And literally, it is one day. We, we went up Wednesday night, we went full bore from early in the morning Thursday to late in the day on Thursday evening and then came right home Friday morning. So when we do these trips, it's not a vacation for anybody. I just want to set the record straight on that. But we had two requests that we really met with all of our local delegation on as well as our neighboring delegations. And the first up is the Willowbrook Road project. And that project is basically, it's, it's connecting two arteries that we have in five forty-four and five forty-two. And if, if, if you travel that five forty-four out to MLK Road, it's not uncommon to sit through that red light, five, six lights, right? It just, and just imagine if, if a bad accident occurs at that intersection, you're stuck. You, you might as well turn around, go back out to twenty-seven and come down Dundee. And so what the Willowbrook Road project intends to do is connect those two roads at a different point so that we kind of can have that, that relief valve and be able to come down Willowbrook Road and then you can, can head out towards the Auburndale area from there or you can make a left and head out towards Dundee Road or make a right and then a left and then you're downtown Winter Haven. So we went to, we went to our delegation with a, a matching request, the city's putting forth at nine hundred thousand dollars. We asked the delegation to support that with a match of nine hundred thousand dollars and that was truly appreciated by them. And in my opinion, we should never go up there and make a request for a hundred percent of a project. Part of this is, is our responsibility and we need to have skin in the game. And every member of our delegation appreciated that and told some stories on other municipalities who don't share that philosophy. But I'm, I'm optimistic that we're going to be able to get some help there and get some matching funds so that we can get that project shovel ready. It's not going to happen overnight, but this is the first major step in making that road a reality. The second item that we talked about up there was Normaio Hall. And those in the audience, you may remember, so a little bit of history, back in early sixties, fifties or so, the then city commission actually donated the land that Normaio Hall sits on to the state of Florida to build the building that's there today. Fast forward up to two thousand and seventeen, the state no longer wanted to own that building, so they put that building up for auction. We were the only municipality to build or really anybody to bid on that property and we bid a million dollars. The state wanted three million dollars. Obviously, we didn't want to go three million dollars because we knew it needed a new air conditioner, we needed, knew it needed a new heater, we knew it needed a roof and we knew that it needed to be updated. So we countered that, we, we put in that into consideration and offering the million dollars, the state said no, but we were able at that time to negotiate a lease and I believe that lease is a thirty-year lea, fifty-year lease, excuse me. But it's hard to really continue to put the amount of money we put into that building knowing that ultimately, we don't own it. Now granted, fifty years from now, it's done to need a new AC again and it's done to need a new heater, but we need to own that building and we think that we have found a possibility to put some language into a bill and bring that ownership of Normaio Hall back to the citizens of Winter Haven. So knock on wood, I'd be surprised if we don't own that building a year from now, but you know, it's Tallahassee and it's a coin flip sometimes, but those are the, the things that we advocated for and we made great progress in it. And, and I, I think, I think they'll, they'll see, we're the rightful owners of that building. We've put forth the funds to make that building what it is today and we need to own it. So with that, that's what we did in Tallahassee and now we'll hear from our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commission. I'm glad you all made it back safely and that your trip was productive and I don't have anything else tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Commissioners, just a couple items. Again, thank you for your patience and your dedication representing citizens of Winter Haven while we were in Tallahassee. It's a fast-paced trip with a lot of engagement and you all did great with that. I do want to extend the best wishes and, and concern and care for state, Senate President Ben Albritton. He was admitted to the hospital on Sunday. He's okay, but he is undergoing some observation there. Wasn't because of anything that we did while we were there, I promise you that, but President Albritton has been a good friend to us and certainly we want to keep him in our prayers as he's dealing with some health-related issues at this very busy time of the legislative session. The, I want to thank Chief Newbrand and your team. You all got to tour two and a half million dollars worth of fire trucks tonight that we had on display. Those are amazing pieces of equipment. We are happy to receive those and to share those. That is your investment in the safety of this community and they were nice and shiny and I know they'll stay that way. I also want to extend some appreciation to Chief Newbrand, his team, Chief Monroe and his team, the entire public safety group. They had a very busy, busy week. They had a very busy, busy week last week that started with a significant structure fire at a major commercial property here in Winter Haven and to see how they addressed that and mitigated it and took control of it in very fast time was amazing and then that extends into our public works team and our natural resources folks who were there to help some of that cleanup. You have an incredible group of folks protecting this community and extremely proud of all of them. Couple of things going forward, I wanted to point out that we had a very busy week at the Ritz Theater last week. When I talked to Mr. Chesnica, I believe it would have been on Saturday, over twelve hundred people went through that building over four events last week, which is phenomenal for downtown, so very excited about that. You have a couple of things on your calendar for this week I want to make sure you're mindful of. Tomorrow, we will have the first putt at Willowbrook Golf Course, that is at three thirty tomorrow afternoon. That is on your calendars and if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to myself, A J or Julie Adams. And then also, some of you, I know that tomorrow evening will be joining our public safety team for the kickoff of the Public Safety Leadership Council. That kicks off at six P M tomorrow evening in the Florida Room of the Florida Citrus Building. That is a program for which people have registered to participate over the next several weeks to learn more about our public safety. So if you're able to join us at that, we would love to see you and that is everything I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy City Manager?
Just a reminder to bring your coats for the first putt tomorrow, it'll be chilly. That's it, thank you.
How long is the putt going to be?
Probably a thirty footer, I don't know. What do you got in you?
It's in my wheelhouse.
Okay. There'll be no gambling.
City Clerk?
Nothing to say, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Assistant Deputy City Clerk, excuse me, nothing. All right. With that, we've got no emergency matters received for the agenda. With that, motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion carries.
Congratulations on your first full meeting, Mr. Mayor.